Okay, border works meeting to start, we'll go ahead and have the prayer. And I see Sally, I think she's coming in right now, so go ahead and have it, do the prayer.
Okay. God be come before you tonight, thankful for another day, we thank you for the seasons that are changing, God. We know that you have good things in store for our community, God. We pray that you would help us to find solutions to the issues that are facing us tonight. We just pray for strength over every leader in our city, and we pray over the people that live in our community, God. We pray your protection and safety over us, and we pray your prosperity over us, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. And while we're standing, let's just go ahead and do the pledge of the flag.
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Give her a few minutes to get back in here, so we can get started. Add the prayer and the pledge, if you can.
Here I am.
Yep. We've got it open now, ready to...
Okay. Bethany, did you do first?
Yeah.
Okay. Apologize, everybody.
Okay. Could I have a roll call, please?
Kenny Willis.
Present.
Charlie Cochran.
Present.
Attorney Jim McDonald. Mayor James Steffendahl. clerk treasurer Sally Dunham, present.
Okay, review of the claims for the minutes from August 26th meeting.
Right.
Any additions or corrections, motion to accept or presented?
I make the motion that we accept them as presented.
I second, all in favor?
Aye.
Review of the claims for the September 9th meeting, has any additions or corrections, a motion to accept as presented?
I'll make the motion that we accept the claims.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There is no old business, and there is no new business. Does anybody have anything to bring before the court?
I have nothing.
Okay, we'll go to department heads. Chief Gaines.
The only thing I have is I received a text from our officer who's at the academy, he passed his first test today. So, and he said that the PT is a breeze, so that's it.
Imagine coming off of basketball season, it should be a breeze for him.
Well, I told him he was an animal, so...
Now with the tagging of the vehicles, the signing of the vehicles, the news.
No, we're still waiting to get the other vehicles, get the vehicles back.
Okay.
And then, once we get there, they'll go to Science by SIZI for the decal attachment.
Okay. Phil Young, Phil's not here now, okay. Adam Tidwood.
Yeah, I have wrote three different work orders for tall grass, for someone to cut. Still waiting on those to be done. Then I've had, I've read up four different citations the last couple of weeks since our last meeting.
Yeah. Well, does anybody else have anything? I look for a motion to adjourn.
Well, make that motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye. We got the griddle flawed somewhere.
Okay. And I'm going to try to make that reference that...
Eighteen foot out.
It's what, the twenty, is it ten seven?
Yeah, it'll be, yeah, five seven.
Okay.
I guess I have to read the budget, so I need to...
I'm trying. It's just every time I run past, I've got one here.
Well, for sure, it's going to be empty, so I really will.
It may come up.
Already forgotten it.
Yeah.
And these... And we want to go ahead and open these, without the attorney here. Are they carrying down the drawing when we don't even have it yet?
I don't know. I don't know.
That's why I have it open. I don't see what I even have to do, just to read it, or just taking it. Their advisement adoption will be on the fourteenth. Three minutes. Watch when you get up, if you don't get your foot caught in that hole down there, okay? Kind of at a bad place.
Yeah, there was all the parking lot. Yeah, I know.
At six o'clock, we'll start the council meeting now, if I could have, we've already done the pledge through the flag, so we can have the roll call now.
Charlie Cochran.
Here.
Mike McGregor.
Here.
Attorney Jim McDonald. Mayor Jim Steffendahl. clerk treasurer Sally Duncan, here. Brady Egdorf. Megan Tapley, here. Bethany Brewer.
Here.
Have a review of the minutes from the August 26th meeting. Any additions or corrections, or a motion to accept or presented?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Mike, seconded?
Megan.
Megan. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Review of the claims from September the ninth. Any additions or corrections, motion to accept as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Megan.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? A review of the claims from the East Gibson Fire Territory, motion to accept as presented?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? We have no old business. The new business, discussion on the budget. I'll turn that over to you, Sally.
Tonight is our public hearing for the budget for 2026. We will have an adoption meeting on Tuesday, October the 14th, here at 6:00 PM at the regular council meeting. The estimated civil max levy is $658,494. The estimated fire territory maximum levy is $353,555. And the property tax cap credit estimate is $365,900. We will be voting on this budget for next year on October the 14th at 6:00 PM.
Can I get a copy of that?
Sure. Let me see where they are, let me get it to you in just a minute. I would mention that we actually had to cut our budget by $75,000 this year. So, the senate bill one is already causing us some difficulties. Ethan here.
We were going to open the bids on the building on Main Street, take it down, but the attorney isn't here, so I'd feel better about it if we waited till the next meeting, when he is here to do this. Since we don't have the property yet, we're still trying to get the property, we don't have it yet, so... Anybody on the council have any concerns that we need to look at? Nobody has any concerns, I'll turn it over to citizens comment.
My name is Bob Sissany, live in Oakland City, on Main Street. About two weeks ago, I observed a tree on Dale Street, just east of Main Street. And it looked to me like it was in great danger of falling down. I contacted Mike McGregor, asking if he could make any kind of arrangements through his contacts with the city or the college that that tree could be moved in a safe manner. He said that he would contact the owner, it's not the college's responsibility, nor the city's responsibility to take that tree down. So, he said he would contact Mr. Johnson about the danger. I'm not sure if he did or not, but within about a day ago, pieces of that limb, about the bigger round of my leg, had fallen onto the street. And if that had fallen into a car, the person would be dead right now. So, in the meantime, somebody must have contacted Mr. Johnson, he made contact with somebody to cut the tree down. And that tree has been cut down today, and it's fallen to the ground. And they're in the process, probably at this moment, taking the wood away to some other safe, approved location. So, I'm not coming here as a prophet, or psychic, or anything, but I did say that that tree was dangerous in a public way. And it definitely was dangerous. So, I'm glad it's been removed in one way or another.
Thank you, Bob.
My name's Ethan Hill, I live here in Oakland City. So, they mentioned last meeting, there would be the results of a drain survey that they did. Do you know when they'll have those?
The meeting has not been scheduled yet, the mayor is out of, he's on vacation, and it has not been scheduled yet. So, when he gets back on the 16th, I think he will try to get that meeting scheduled, I don't know when it will be.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Every day, I got a couple lessons up. I looked up on the computer, I got the no drones, I'm thinking, I mean, I can't really fly those around your property.
State your name, please.
Richard Gilbertson. And I've had a little issue with that, but I think the attorney might be able to help me with that, but he's not here tonight. And I had another one I wrote down, was, what the heck was it? I talked to these two guys about it, and it was the, how do we get a pirate radio test where people manipulate things? With the dog transmitters, the things you use like on a shock collar for animals? And that takes you to the pirate radio thing, and unfortunately, I... And unfortunately, I, these guys did show up and they talked to me a little bit about it, but they didn't have any information on it. So I thought maybe that would be something else that maybe the attorney might have to pile up the paperwork for, which obviously you can't help me out with that tonight. So. And there was, I can't really read. I'm not very good by handwriting.
Richard, can you explain again what you were saying so I can have for the minutes? What were you talking about on the second thing?
Oh, with the, there's something they use that, I don't know if you've seen them on people with them for, you know, to help you keep your dog under control. It's like that.
I think he's talking about the invisible fence.
Yeah, it's like, you know what I mean? Actually give your dog a little zelt with it, you know what I mean? Get its attention. And that took me to the FCC site on there and to a pirate radio thing. And I don't know exactly who files the paperwork or how you get those things. Because it's not really something that normally people have to deal with. I understand that. Which brings me here tonight. I know it sounds kind of odd. It's one of those things that you run into, unfortunately. And I can't read my handwriting right now. I see something else I had down here. That was basically it. I was kind of like the no drone zone thing. I said that was a federal law that you could get, that you can deal with, you know what I mean? So you're not, obviously the technology today is pretty good, you know? You can get a lot of invasion of privacy with those things. And that brought me to the no drone zone thing. Those were the two things that I had that I wanted to ask tonight. And I appreciate you guys. One more thing that I haven't, sorry about that. Go ahead.
Every time you've called in reference to the drone.
Yeah.
We have gone out, searched the block, not seen any drones.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that also. I don't know how you get the ones because it's like, as fast as I call, you know what I mean? They take off and I'm sure you guys are probably used to that kind of nonsense, you know? And I forgot about that. For some reason, when I get a citation, I don't know, they've been going to my dad's house for some reason. I don't really know why. So they got.
That's because on court records.
Yeah, I wondered about that tonight.
On court record, your dad legally owns that place.
That was.
So I have to send that letter.
I'll have to talk to him about that. And I know this is the last time I give him some money because I don't always have a chance to fix mine. He'll take the tax money up here, but he is the last one on the living will of that. So I don't know if I need to, that's nothing that I have any concern about. Anybody here though? So it's really all I had to say was the no drone zone thing. I thought maybe it might make it easier on you guys also, you know what I mean?
Well, like I said, Mr. Culbertson. Anytime you've called, we've been out there.
And that makes it a little rougher too because it's like, I don't have a telephone. So usually by the time I beat feet down there, you know, it doesn't really make it any easier on anybody like that. And I thought if I could figure out how to get that automatically, you know what I mean? That's what I was looking into. But I appreciate it and that's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments? If not, I'll.
I do have something, sorry. It went so fast. I don't want to write it. Okay, because I was gone from the last meeting. I apologize. Discussion on the water rates. So is that like a done deal?
No.
Okay, so.
Buzz Crum was here last time to explain everything. We don't have a hearing until the 14th.
Okay. So we'll be talking about it again the next meeting or just wait until the 14th?
No, we've, I don't think we're talking about next year. But I have all the information and I have a packet I can give you that he gave us.
I appreciate that very much. And I'll get with you on some other things too. So I don't hold us up.
The base part of it was a 12.4% increase, which I'm trying to remember how much of that was what we have to pay because of Mike Gibson raising their rates for the last three years or four years that we haven't raised.
Is that it? Anybody else?
The only thing I would like to mention is I think in the emails that I sent you all that we would like to discuss the budget in an executive session after next meeting, the 23rd. 23rd, yeah. I think the 23rd is right.
I saw that, yeah.
Okay, so please plan to stay for some discussion on what we've had to do with the budget. Mike, is that okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have something on the computers?
No, I do not have anything yet.
I thought you said to bring them tonight.
Oh, the iPad. I'm sorry. Yeah, everybody can drop your iPads off to City Hall so that they can be checked for updates. We would appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. So I did, I forgot to mention something too. So I brought it to Brady a while back and he, it didn't really go anywhere. But so when they did paving next to my house, they slung all kinds of blacktop in my yard and then one of their trucks turned around in the grass and tore up the grass. And I don't think anybody's really been over there or done anything about it other than look at it driving by once and then nothing's really gone on with it. But I'd like to get at least the grass seed covered where I go to fix that where they tore it up.
What's the address?
110 South Lincoln. And it's on the side that faces Columbia Street.
Okay.
So it's where they tore up the grass is at the very back. There's like a, it's right, my truck's parked in back. It's right by the truck.
Okay, I will take it to the office.
Thank you.
You guys already left town, haven't you? They're probably done. Anybody else? I look for a motion to adjourn.
Bob, did you have something?
I did want to say one more thing.
Good.
You might think I'm have a one-track mind on talking about this, but about a year ago, I brought this to the attention of the council. And there was, again, trees that are diseased and sick and ready to fall. And I gave many locations throughout town. And some of those trees are still upright. Others have been fallen down and been taken down. I was just, one of them that I'm concerned about is right across the street from me at the library, there's a huge tree on private property. And then there's another one next to Hensley's garage there in Main and Franklin that needs, that's going to start dropping branches here. And these are, you know, frequently traveled routes. And my concern is that unbeknownst to the driver, that branch can fall 50 feet in one second and do some damage to the property or people. And I was just wondering how, what kind of mechanism might you have to inform the property owners that the tree is a hazard to the public and that something needs to be done?
If it's on private property, we can, we can tell them the tree's a bad tree, but we can't do anything about it.
Do you not have a mechanism of sending out a notification that it's a hazard to the general public?
Nope.
You don't have that? Can you adopt such a ruling?
We'll have to get with the attorney on that.
You have, with the attorney?
Yeah.
Okay. Could somebody make a motion to try to discuss that with the attorney and get some action?
We'll discuss that with the attorney and see where he stands on it and we could go from there then.
Okay, thank you.
Now, can I get a motion adjourned?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion from Bethany. Second?
I'll second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.